I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take your own call, please. You're even. Start with you.
Here.
Jack Dutton?
Here.
Kristin Hodder?
Here.
Bill Redden here. Donald Haines Jr.?
Here.
Keith Payne?
Here.
Darrell Haynes?
Here.
Kirk Rome?
Here.
Secretary Charles Ivey?
Here.
Solicitor?
Here.
Mr. Boucher. Do you have the treasurer's report?
Ready for the president?
Hold on one moment. We have a question as to why the Treasury wire you today?
I would ask that...
By whom?
By a member of the...
By what member of the council?
I'm sorry?
Who asked you?
They can... I gave them so they'd like it.
Have they pardoned you just such a long time? Oh, you did? For what reason? One day we had dated.
I don't think that means you have him here. Who's paying for it?
Yeah, that would be my question. Who authorized the expenditure? Are you paying for it or your own?
Mr. Banks did...
Well, he just said he's paying for it on his own.
Okay.
Because it was not voted on by councils, nobody... We have an authorized payment.
Donald Haines is the one who called you then? On behalf of borough? Yes?
On behalf of several.
Is that...
So what about the conflict between our regular councilable? No conflict in that one here for the second thing. Another layer.
But one of you gets paid and one of you doesn't.
Again, I was asked to perform the duty for payment.
Oh, he's in the meeting.
So what actual duties do we ask you to do? Just be speaking? No specific thing?
No, sir.
Nothing, Mr. Sevenhead's so important, but he's keeping on that shirt right here.
Any reason we needed another councilable down? Did you think there was something wrong from the last meeting or...
Jack's asking your question. I don't think he heard you.
Did you feel there was anything out of wrong, out of order or wrong going on in the last meeting?
Pardon me?
Since he wanted to know if he felt there was anything going on, anything wrong at the last meeting that he felt he needed Mr. Banks here.
I just feel more comfortable with him here. That's it.
Does that mean you hired a personal bodyguard?
Excuse me?
I'm gonna ask the council, why is Mr. Banks getting paid by someone? I want him to get his pay.
You can ask.
Like that was obvious. Is that a lot? Mr. Boucher, is a council member allowed to just call a constable?
Sure. It's a public need. What is not having the council pay for it because council members are very vocal? He's a... And I would say this, the constables, they shouldn't be in the risk of being in conflict. After we've spent a lot of time on the numbers, we should just go with the name.
Well, I think what Dave's point was that he could be paid also.
Well, they may have a point. They may have a point.
He's elected official, so...
For the borough. For the borough. Duly elected by the citizens of this borough.
So that means...
Moving right along. Moving... Yes.
So that means each councilman can hire their own personal bodyguard and have the council pay for it?
No, no, he pays for it.
He's paying for it out of the pocket? Then it's all wrong.
Correct. The citizens can pay for the possible other... Oh, I believe that's what Mr. Boucher said.
Okay, let's move on to the treasurer's report.
At this time, I think Mr. Sheldon has got a very valid point. I would like to make a motion that our councilable gets paid at the same rate.
What is your rate? Richard, what's your rate?
That's a pride between myself and this time.
Yeah.
Well, no, I never asked you, but just make a motion.
Okay, what would be your rate?
I charge my... Well, first of all, I don't get paid to attend my township needs as an elected public official there. I choose not to charge in the same way Mr. Sheldon has done so far.
Yes.
But when I'm called out of the area, I give them the same rate I give to the township that I work for, which is a half rate. It's seventy-five dollars for the first hour. And then it's twenty-seven fifty for each edition.
Okay. Well, we have a motion on the floor. You can finish your motion.
I've got a motion that we pay Dave at the rate of seventy-five for the first hour and then twenty-seven for the every hour thereafter.
Twenty-seven fifty, okay.
Twenty-seven fifty, yes.
Yes, sir.
Can we have a... Do we have a second? I'll second that motion. Okay. There's a motion in the floor that we pay councilables seventy-five dollars for the first hour, twenty-seven fifty for every hour thereafter. We entertain a vote. Kirk?
No.
Darrell? Darrell Haynes, no. Keith Payne, no.
Yes.
Gail, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Donald Haines Jr., no.
Treasurer's report?
I want to make another announcement before we part around the table and the minutes to be... I should say.
Well, that's fine. They're already taking... There's a lot of people paying that, so that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. Can we have the treasurer's report, Charles?
Okay, this is treasurer's report for July 5th, 2022. The general fund, the balance, we have a dollar sixty-two interest. Forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents is the balance as of today. As you look through it, you can see what checks I've written. And the last amount from the Commerce of Pennsylvania was for traffic tickets. I guess they've given in this area. And our split on that is a hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents. My questions are, like, does soil testing and engineering fees, should that come out of the construction fund or does that come out of the general fund?
General fund, you got the... My question is, you got soil testing.
Yeah, he charged the customer nineteen-hundred and fifteen dollars and then he charged fourteen-hundred and forty-five dollars.
Okay.
We keep the rest. We keep the rest.
So is that amount going to the construction fund? If I could just transfer...
No, you mean liquid fuel?
No, no, no. UCP. UCC. Universal Construction Code Fund. Is that going to that?
It goes in the general fund.
It's general fund.
It's general fund. It goes in there, so I don't do anything. Okay, liquid fuels. We... The balance is twenty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty cents. We paid Bill Pykus for a blank check that was written to him last year by Demi. And I guess he did the construction, so I wrote him the check for what the blank check was supposed to be and destroyed per check. And Chris Miller, for the last time, he plowed the six-hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar bill, paid that. UCC account balances two thousand, three hundred and fifty-one cents unchanged. And the fire fund was unchanged. Fire fund has ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents in it. That's been unchanged. The loan, the balance is eighty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So this fire fund is the fire tax that people pay? Did you not get any checks for fire tax between the dates of May 31st and June 30th from the tax collector?
Not that I know of. I think they were all property tax. Does he say fire tax on there? It should be right here.
It is my understanding that you sent two separate checks, one for the property tax and one for the fire tax?
Okay. I didn't realize that. I thought both checks were property tax.
So we will need to rectify that and figure out how much that is. Because this is always separate checks. Whether it says so or not, you have the tax collector.
I got a different line in it. Nobody...
How about for April and May also?
Well, it would've been the same thing then. Totally easy, the fire tax.
I don't know. You'd have to ask the tax collector.
I know, but I just thought you might have known.
Well, this also seems to be...
Is there a separate bill for fire tax?
Yes.
Yeah, that should have been separate check.
It is separate check. That I know that he sent separate checks he has since the day he was fired.
That I said like, there are all these...
It's all paid under one check, the one that pays for taxes?
How... Yes.
Is it broken down? Is it on the bill for each separate bill?
It's on the bill. But what do we... One check for both?
See, if it's all on the bill, then it's breakable.
Right. So if I can clarify on this, so yes, it's broken down on the bill, like in real estate, fire tax. And yes, a lot of people pay with one check. I know I didn't do it with one check. But on the program, when you run the report, it separates it. And then there's two.
See, it's separated here, seven oh nine. Let's see. So usually you just go by this number, but here it's separated. So I guess that's... I have to take that much from out?
Right.
Out and put that in the fire fund.
Right. You could double-check all that with the tax collector. Or we could tell you, make sure you have the correct numbers.
Right, because he sends two separate checks.
I don't know how to use the program, so...
Well, I found what I needed to. I'll just make those corrections.
There any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Also, regarding the payment to the tax collector on June 21st, were his federal taxes, social security, medic... What is that? Remember that. Thank you. Deducted from that as it should be?
No, because I thought he was working on a ten ninety-nine. Because when I checked last year's salaries, the only person who filled out a W-2 that I could find was Demi. And when I checked her W-3, which she's supposed to have every single employee listed on that dozen W-2, again, she was the only name on there.
Well, she sent him a W-2, so... And she has every year that she worked here.
Well, I'll send him a new W-4 that he could fill out.
You know, you are checking. I'm not sure if he could have that deducted.
He has sent. He has since he...
Really?
Paid borough tax collector for the past ten years.
Because usually, you know, if you don't pay an employee like vacation days and sick days and all that stuff, you just give him a ten ninety-nine and he'll do it himself.
But he's not an employee.
Yeah.
Yes.
He's a white policeman. He gets a life.
Yes, usually they do a ten ninety-nine.
I think he's still employed. The county sends him a W-2? The school district sends him a W-2? The borough sends him a W-2? I know, because that's the one who does the taxes and he has three of them.
Yeah, they won't send it back.
And he's collected for all of those.
Is either any question?
I have one more question. I'm sorry? When you're talking about Mr. Pykus, you said something about there was a blank check and then you wrote a check and then you destroyed the blank check. I'm not quite clear what you meant by that.
She wrote Bill Pykus a blank check for one of the road projects.
And mailed it to him or just it was just laying around when you got...
No, I guess she gave it to the county. And then the county was supposed to fill it out and give it to him after this grant was completed. But since she's not a secretary treasurer, they just asked me to write him a check and I said, well, return that check to me and when I destroy it, then I'll write him a check.
Who are you talking to wrote the check originally? Demi?
Yes. This was on one of the road projects that were approved last year.
What was the amount of that check?
You know anything about it?
Yeah, it was through a Fairmont...
Which check?
The Bill Pykus check. How much was it written for at the end of the day?
One thousand, sixty-two dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
So that was our part of the...
Fairmont Road.
Fairmont Road?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what it was, Fairmont Road. Yeah, the county contacted me on that.
There any other questions about the treasurer's report?
You're not clear. You got a debit on the Tri County newspaper for five hundred and sixty-five dollars?
Yes. Does it hold the ads and...
Five hundred and sixty-five dollars?
They're like a hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece.
And they have been paid a while?
They have been paid for... That should be... Because people kept putting ads in for random meetings. Do you remember that?
Okay, there any other questions? Do you entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report with the...
Those are... These are... But it's not correct. Like, this is not correct.
No, this is not correct.
Well, the fire tax wouldn't be correct, so I would have to...
And you do...
Direct the fire tax and just transfer it.
And you do...
Right.
The general fund would be correct either if you got a debit.
Well, yeah, you would have to take out how much we... Nine hundred dollars or something.
Right, because there was a motion made from what Chad told me, the fire chief told me this morning, that motion was made last year, made in January and July. So there would be a July payment due, which we need to have this corrected so we can pay that, because the motion was made last year for the fire chief.
I could do that automatically, though. No problem.
But we need all those corrections made and then... Now, with all those corrections, we need all those corrections made and then we'll have an amended treasurer's report. Any other comments? About it?
No, I'll sign down the debit for it to fill out, so I know.
I'd like to make the motion to reset the treasurer's report with the adjustment of putting the tax, the fire tax reimbursement back into the fire account, the general account, and adjust the two accounts accordingly.
We have a second? I'll second the motion. All those in favor? Kirk?
Would you read that motion back, Charlie?
That Vice President made a motion to accept the treasurer's report with amendments to the fire tax.
And the general fund also wasn't?
Yes. Well, yeah, the general fund.
Fire bill.
And then the whole...
The general fund, because you have to adjust that to adjust that.
Yeah.
Right, also. All those in favor? Kirk?
Yes.
Darrell?
Donald Haines, yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Gail, yes.
Donald Haines Jr., yes.
Those to be paid?
Okay, we have Maje.
And she's all been asking to make sure it's taken care of, the insurance.
Maje Fisher is in itemized bill here, but if I want to see it. And total fees for this bill is one thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars.
I believe at the last meeting, Mr. Boucher, there was a question about who this Roger person was that... And you...
Yes, and that's been clarified. He knows that, no doubt. Okay.
So who's Roger?
I resolved it with Madam President and didn't charge her.
Right, I was gonna say, it was just... Yes.
I just was curious what the dates were from that. What period?
This looks like it goes from June 3rd to June 28th.
Thank you.
And next? Yes.
Okay, we have a... One from Karpowitz Attorney's Act law for three thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-five cents. I guess it went out for about twenty-seven dollars.
So hasn't that already been voted out and voted down?
Yeah.
Keep sending the bill.
He keeps sending the bill, though. Just because you don't choose not to pay doesn't mean he's not gonna still send one. But you wanna see it, you should.
What am I gonna do?
Ron, that question we brought up.
What am I gonna do to pay that now with the mayor?
I know what you required about it, and I sent a letter advising you what needed to be done. So wasn't one of my letters that I sent out, I think I copied Jack and I copied...
You did, but you didn't advise it. You just sent it out with the rural code. There's a conflict of interest.
What normally happens is if he wants the hour and order, he's allowed to move it under the code, but he doesn't get it advanced and then it gets paid.
But does the code say it has to be advanced?
What?
Does the code say it has to be advanced?
Code doesn't say it has to be advanced.
Yeah, I think so, because I read that.
Let me just go back to the question I had. Probably we'll have to be better after that. So the January meeting was a valid meeting according to the court records. Council ended up voting him to be a solicitor, they fired you. So for that period of time, even though council had the rights to go back and amend it, what happened in January should have stayed happening, correct?
Except for the judge's decision that said...
That's just what I said.
The borough could go back and amend whatever they wanted to once they reconvened. That was the problem.
Okay, so he did his duties as of January. So they can go back and change our motion as of February, but they can't go back and change their motion. I don't think nowhere near a judge is saying that you can go back because they could go back and modify it. So modify would mean that you could go back and modify and change a motion what you wanted to change. But they could not appeal any motion or get rid of any motion.
They can modify that they hired...
Exactly.
This guy that he hid with, which meant that he was never even a lawyer. Let me say this. It's a simple fact. I said before, I dealt with this lawyer before. I thought he was a straight shooter. I thought he knew what he was doing. I thought he put work into the thing. You could either pay the bill or not pay the bill. Jason, as mayor, he could hire somebody to represent him. This is not what's being done. He's using this as a way to get a pass bill paid because he was involved in it. I understand that's what he's trying to do. So you could either pay the bill or not pay the bill.
Could you explain yourself? You thought he was a straight shooter. What do you mean by that?
Well, he dealt constructively with it. We had some reasonable telephone conversations. We understood what he used to work. I did advise him, however, that I felt he was really wrong because I had the right case that I thought would win the case for Kirk. I thought Kirk was wrongly deceived and I told him that.
But now you're saying he was a straight shooter. So he worked for the borough up until the court case, correct?
Certainly voted for the borough.
He was voted in at that point, right? Before we went into the court case, was he the borough attorney or not?
Jack, Mary, we're getting... We're getting off on a note here. I just gave you a little opinion. You can vote to pay the bill. You can vote to not pay the bill. There's arguments on each side.
I will put this in writing to you so you can give your legal opinion that it was not the borough's attorney.
I think it was modified.
I will put it in writing to you so we can get it in.
So you want to ask me for a request for an opinion?
Go ahead. Does that mean something, Ron?
Hello.
So amending something does not negate that it ever happened?
It can. Depends on how it's done.
We amended the Constitution. That doesn't negate that prohibition ever happened. It's a fact. It happened. It just stopped from that point.
But I'm not gonna argue with you over legality.
And we don't have to...
I've given my little opinion. You can pay or you can not.
If Mayor Heeman uses his mayor privilege to hire a solicitor who did represent him, that's not a voting issue.
But that's not what happened. Mayor Heeman didn't hire him. The council purported they hired him, not Mayor Heeman.
So is this something that you go back and get a clarification from the judge?
The judge will clarify. What would have to happen is Karpowitz would have to suit the borough and then some judge would decide if the borough owes it or individuals owe it. That's what would have to happen. In the meantime, you can vote to pay or not.
Well, we don't have to vote if that's his mayor privilege. It's not an issue we vote on. He has it. And you told him, that's what borough code says.
You are putting words in my mouth.
Did you tell him that's...
I told him what the card said, which he could hire a lawyer under circumstances that I outlined in the letter. That's not what happened here.
And what exactly I want to...
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bill for the attorneys for their services for January 2020 bill.
And what attorney are you referring to?
Harvey.
What attorney are you referring to?
Harvey Lewis. The bill that he just read, I didn't have another bill, so I think I just keep the balance. Motion's out of Florida to pay the attorney bill for January services for Karpowitz.
I'll second that. We put the motion on the floor. All those in favor? Kirk?
No.
Darrell Haynes, no. Keith Payne, no.
Jack, yes.
Gail, yes.
Kristin Potter, yes.
Donald Haines Jr., no.
The next bill?
Next bill is from Penellicic for ninety-three dollars and forty-nine cents.
And the next one?
Have you worked one just yet? Well, we have Donald Potter, but I'm going to hold off on this one until we get a W-4 ton. And then I'll take whatever taxes he owes out of this, his final check.
How do we vote to pay him with the proper amount with help from his paycheck?
Yes.
So that we don't have to wait months and months and he had to be paid.
What's the amount for Potter? Well, without his social security and other deductions, it's five hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-one cents.
And then you'll modify that to take up the proper amount.
We'll modify that. We'll modify that to take the taxes now since he wants to do W-2 with the ten ninety-nine.
Somebody wants to do that is what is going.
Okay, the next one?
Next one was for insurance, E.G.K. insurance.
We have two bills, totally $2,671.75. One's for errors and omissions, and assessment fee, workers' compensation.
Is that all the bills?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have Mr. Bujay, we have Penelope, we have the insurance, and we have Donald Potter. You entertain a motion to pay...
I made a motion to pay Bujay Fisher pay the light bill, pay Donald Potter $531.01 minus... What's with help, and pay for EKG bill, $2671.75.
Second motion.
All those in favor of paying all those bills, as so stated, the last four, Kirk?
Yes.
Donald Haines, yes. Keith Payne, yes.
Jack, it's James, because he wished the bills were paid individually.
Gail, yes. Kristen Power, yes. Ken?
Donald Haines, Junior, yes.
All right. Now, we all have, you all have copies of the minutes. You both can read them. Are there any... Do you want them read in total, or...
I have questions here.
Sure, come on, stop.
Ron, you had your meeting with the land commissioner. You was ordinance, what ordinance were you reviewing?
Subdivision.
The subdivision one?
I tried to gather to the Madam President, but she didn't have it.
I have none. We don't have the ordinance.
It's critical that your solicitor has copies of the ordinance.
Would be critical if the council didn't have copies of the ordinance, send the ordinance books.
You know, I could bring something else, but I think it's significant. Other boroughs enact what's called like a borough code for themselves, and take whatever ordinances they have and just quickly, you know, sort of, oh, so you got all your ordinances, you have a code.
We have them.
We have the ordinance book. We have that.
But they're separate ordinances. I'm saying that you do the code, but you gotta have your...
Right.
That was all in there, but the problem was, we had Travis running the show, and a bunch of council members that was running the show, and we haven't got the documents back. We should have the ordinance book.
You should have the ordinance.
Yeah, well, it was there back in 2015, and it was there in 2017 with Keith Payne.
I can speak to that. With regard to what was discussed at the last meeting, you mentioned that I must have the ordinance book because I gave you some ordinance with a right-to-know request. And after thinking about it, I believe the ordinance in question was kind of loose leaf within those records room. And that records room was pretty much, I'm sure how you found it. It was in disarray. So I can't speak to whether or not there was an ordinance book there. There were definitely some loose leaf ordinances. Now, with regard to, I believe, when was it, January or February of 2019, after I was secretary, I did hold on to the records until, I would say, early to mid-February because I was doing urine reports, et cetera.
Which is 17, is it?
Seventeen, okay. Yeah, whenever the last year I was secretary, I held on to the records for about a month, a month and change to do those reports. Some of those files went to the auditors for the audit, and some of them went to Demme. And I can't speak for exactly who got what. I know whatever I did not give the auditors went to Demme. The rest went to the auditors for their audit. So again, I just wanted to speak on the ordinance book because I can't speak to whether I had access to that or not at that time.
You said everything went to the auditors. What auditor did you go to?
There was the gentleman who lives over on the corner here.
Yagadi.
Yagadi.
You know, he resigned.
Okay, then there was the gentleman that used to live in the president's secretary's home. Kramer. Kramer and...
No, I gave you nine in...
No, no.
November of 2017, you resigned.
November, and I gave him those in what, February, so he was there.
Now, did he get the audit?
Whoever was the auditors, I believe...
Was that DeBalko?
I believe DeBalko and Kramer, they're still the auditors. I'm pretty sure, yes.
Now, I'd like to clarify that. So 2018, DeBalko resigned, Kramer resigned, and council played the game of sending the letter to DCED. Jordan Dalton was elected auditor, and they wouldn't give him no, Kirk knows about this, that they wouldn't give Jordan any paperwork as being an auditor. And then there was two people that served after that had letters of interest in March of 2019 to do the 18 audit, and council wouldn't appoint no one. So they ended up, actually, they had hired Laura Travis to do it. Or I shouldn't say Laura Travis did it. And we went to the April meeting, and Kirk says, "No, we shot a letter off to DCED" to see what they wanted to do, even though they had two letter of interest. And come to find out, Laura had already submitted the audit the same day of her meeting audit, April 1st.
What did that letter say that you got from DCED that we never saw?
What letter was that, Dave? Because I don't know if...
You got a letter from DCED?
I never got a letter from DCED.
Oh. Action's changed, huh?
No, 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 no. I'll bring everything to show you. You guys scanned it up, so who did you hire?
Yes, that was you.
So Laura had, Laura had the audit at the April meeting pretending these guys was waiting for DCED to come back. And then we never knew about it until August. So when we come to the April, or we come to the May meeting, guess what they did? They hired Laura to do the 2018 audit, even though she hadn't done it the month before. And she's done the audit ever since. So our elected auditors have never been able to do the audit up until this year.
You can't have one person do the audit. You can't.
Well, they had Laura Travis do the 18, 19, and 20 audit.
She was the secondary.
You hired a temporary auditor when the other ones were not available. Jordan was available. You did not allow him to do it.
You were allowed with the meeting.
Well, you should be when you're in there.
Gotcha. Aye.
Actually, I'll put a video of it, so I can show you that, Kirk.
You have the minutes. Has everyone read the minutes? Do you have anything?
Yes.
Comment on in the minutes? Be sorry. I'm sorry, Ray. I'm sorry, I didn't see what you...
No, that's all right. Just prefacing the committee to codify the records. I just wanted to say that, Mr. Bujay, if it's all right, I'd like to reach out to you when we get to the point for recommendations on how to organize ordinances.
I'll be happy to help.
Great. That's all.
Anybody want to see Bujay's bill?
You've all read the minutes, members of the council. Do you have something, comments, errors, omissions?
Yes, in the April meeting, most of the things, for Keith and I to raise respect for the Penn Hill, Buxton, Talon Road, and to send him to redevelopment. And that's only partial, we need to do in six minutes here.
I just referenced that that motion was made to update it. You're supposed to get an updated April 4th minutes with that in it.
Okay, and then the motion to accept the April minutes, there was a motion made in the second, there was never a vote taken on it.
Anybody want to revise the April minutes?
What page are you looking at, Doc?
Number one, third paragraph from the body. There was never a vote taken.
To approve those minutes.
You have one right here. I mean, last month. There was a motion.
There was a motion in the second, but there was never a vote taken.
Yeah, there was.
It may be in here, but there was never a vote taken.
I know that Ray wrote these, and he went all the way...
I know, I know they were rolled up, but there was never a vote taken when it was due.
That's where we're...
April 4th.
I'd have to go back and watch the videotape again, but my notes...
There was a different motion. There was a motion in the second, but there was never a vote taken on it.
You all know it.
Page 34.
And who seconded it?
What is this?
Who seconded it?
I can't tell you, but I know there was a vote. I know Gail seconded it, made the voter, and it was seconded, but there was never a vote.
Right, right, right. I seconded it. You didn't say I seconded it. Right, no, I know, that's why I was asking.
And on the last page, motion to hire Picas and Fisher Miller, but there was never a vote taken on that one either.
You were gonna look at prices?
Yes.
There was no vote taken.
So it says motion, it says motion for Darrell makes a motion to amend the agenda in order to modify the existing contracts with Thompson Township, Bill Picas. That's the one you're talking about?
Yes.
Right, and then below it says Darrell makes, oops, Darrell makes a motion to rescind. All right, so that's a copy-paster, my apologies. On the book. It took me five hours to do these, so I apologize for my errors. As everyone knows, the conversations flow fast and loose in here, and trying to go back and watch it and make sure you don't miss anything.
And the reason that with the Picas, we don't, there was no fees, there was no...
Correct, yes.
That's why we never voted on it, because we had to have the information. You can't have a contract without having...
I don't have a problem, but I'm just saying it wasn't voted on.
Right. And that is why. I think, you all have the amended minutes? For any other comments?
There is a typo, I noticed, that the meeting was adjourned at 9:52, not 9:562.
Oh, yes. Me adjourned at, this says 9:30. Like 9:52, yeah, that would have been indeed longer than it was.
There is one other correction that we need on these minutes, so it would be on page four. We're about halfway down. Donald Haines and Keith asked Tom to amend the contract for loaning to Catholic Church. That should be the Baptist church.
Oh, I know.
Okay, so what we got for the amendments, and we got the church. What else? Everybody else have... Did we all amend it for amendment?
There was no vote taken on the April minutes.
April minutes.
Page six midway. Kind of track. There was no vote.
Okay, what you said was that vote was down here.
Okay.
On the next paragraph.
Okay. Okay. So that's actually, doesn't need to correct the amendment, do you think?
No, no, actually, I believe, I believe that the vote needs to come out on that motion. And then the next paragraph says that it was rescinded, so there was no vote, so there'd be no vote recorded. And then the next paragraph is it was, he rescinded his motion.
Right.
And you don't need a vote on that, I think.
No, because he had, right, he had rescinded the motion, so that was negated. And this tells Catholic Church.
So what I understand is that, I need to check, but Darrell says there's no, there was no vote on the motion to accept the April minutes, on page one. On page four, it needs to say Baptist Church instead of Catholic Church. And on page six, the vote needs to be removed from the Thompson Township, Bill Picas contract vote, and the time needs to be updated to 9:52.
What page of the contract, Doc?
It's on page six. About one, two, three, fourth paragraph down.
Okay. So that's all up to that, and the rescinded one?
Right, right, those are connected, so...
Darrell, you said that we, no vote was taken from the April 4th. But then it said that this was where we made the motion and seconded, then you said, no, it was never done.
And did you mean the motion and the seconded vote taken?
That's something that has to be rectified, we need to approve.
Who seconded it, you know?
I beg your pardon?
Who seconded it?
It's not written down here. It just says seconded, but not by whom. Everyone voted yes, but who? That will have to be rectified. Because we have to approve the minutes. Because you can't put them in the borough minute book with the seal on it, signed and sealed, if they've not been approved.
Right.
So that's illegal.
You'd probably be putting it in a book.
And they have to be put in the book, it has to be signed with a seal, so we need a motion to approve the April minutes. Why that wasn't...
I'll make a motion to approve the revised April minutes.
Okay, is there a second?
Sounds like a...
Okay, all those in favor of approving the April revised, and then the April 4th, 2022 revised minutes?
And should there be amended to revise the demonstration?
Yes.
Yes. Kirk?
Yes.
Donald Haines, yes.
Keith Payne, yes. Jack, yes.
Gail, yes.
Kristin Power, yes.
Donald Haines, Junior, yes.
Okay. Can we entertain a motion then to approve the minutes as read with the corrections, that it's the Catholic Church? And the rest was correct from the amended minutes. The rest is correct. Do you entertain a motion?
Repeat that, you know?
Do you entertain a motion to approve the amended minutes with the exception that it should be say Catholic Church, not Baptist Church?
You're talking to...
I mean Baptist Church, not Catholic Church.
You're talking to human sex, right?
Yes.
But that should be taken out of the vote for the April minutes?
I beg your pardon?
I said that should be taken out of the minutes before they're approved of a vote.
Well, I said amended to remove that.
Okay.
Amended to remove that it had been voted on prior to.
Okay.
And then with the exception of the city of the church. We have a motion to approve the minutes with the, with the all the corrections.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 6th minutes with the corrections of, there was no vote for the April minutes. Specs to be sent to redevelopment. And we stated it's Baptist church, considered Catholic.
Right.
And there was no motion to pass to hire Picas or Chris Miller for voting.
Right, that was rescinded. Okay, we have a, we have a motion on the floor for a second. I'll second it. All those in favor?
I understand.
Darrell?
Donald Haines, yes. Keith Payne, yes. Jack, it's James.
Gail, yes.
Kristin Power, yes.
Donald Haines, Junior, yes.
Do we have any correspondence?
Okay, the only correspondence I have is...
Okay, the only correspondence I got was, I forgot, two letters that Jay sent concerning the church project. That's all the subdivision thing. My subdivision, yeah, and electronic reports, I was trying to get some of the reports done, and the piece of paper that Debbie sent in, and then her mom, the passwords and the username were completely different than what they were reported to be. I contacted the state several times, their IT department, at first they didn't want to give it time today, and they said they couldn't get in there, and I'm like, well, I used to be a network administrator, and I could get into any files on my network, so I complained to the head moderator, and she gave me some advice to sit more down, but then she had a whole, I guess they had, hey, IT person, who then gave me the answers to the questions I needed and a way to get into there, so that was just done Friday, so I still gotta see if everything worked out, but I think it will.
Oh, so that part was resolved then?
Yes, I hope so, but like I said, none of the usernames and the passwords were the same ones that they were using, so I don't understand how they would have.
What's the status of the report at this time? Do you think, what's the status of the report at this time?
Well, the, um, what was it, I got that one done, it starts with a P, I don't remember the name of it now. Yeah, that one, I was able to get, the server project, I, again, I tried to get in with my pa, with the password, I tried making a new password, then they started asking me for a code, a special passcode, so I gotta call them up and try and get the passcode, so. But I'm work, I'm working on trying to get all these projects finished.
And how many are there total that need to be?
About three. I think I have one from the census committee, there's one on salaries, and there's something, what's the, oh, actually, I think they were trying to get ahold of me through the audio, I'm not in on it, I think they're trying to get ahold of me for that. Still, it kind of spells them out. That's the letter, I know I pressed it wrong, but he may want to get a copy of that.
Yeah.
Right, and I forwarded all that to you, Charlie, you didn't get it?
That might, I was identifying what those reports were.
What basis?
But they're not, yeah.
Or Travis, that was us, intended to be outlining what she believed to be all the way for reports.
So these are all the end of year reports?
No, they're not end of year, they're, they're 22 reports, they're not end of year.
22 reports to, on what, on what?
So why don't you tell us what the reports are?
What dates? What dates do these reports cover?
They're due, they're due January 22nd, which means that they are reports from 2021 that Demi was hired to finish those for $200. They, I saw those minutes, so she should have, she should have done all these, they should have been.
They're 2021 reports, that's not, no.
They're 2021 reports, they're due the end of March or sometime in April.
Not, they do, January 22nd, January this year.
What were those reports for?
I didn't think all of them were due then.
Yeah, see, most of them.
Well, let's just clarify this up, Demi was hired at the end of, they were back in 2021 to do the end of year reports, so even though you had marched to do them, they were still 2021 reports, correct?
Not to my knowledge.
Yes, just, just like our April tax, it's not even April, but it's 2021 April tax.
Yeah, they would.
These are reports for 2021.
Most of these were due in January, but they're the end of the year from 2021. Yeah, one is April.
But it's for 2021.
Yeah, but so, but see, these are all last year things that Charlie didn't have any access to, and that's why he hired, Demi was hired according to the minutes to finish these, but they were done, so now Charlie decided to.
I hope you think you consent to that, and how far the reports are due, you should have a copy.
From last year, but he didn't have, and he didn't have.
You should have a copy of what those reports are.
But we don't, they were never.
You know you're missing so much paperwork from your friends, and she was hired to do that job.
They were never finished from 2021, see, Charlie didn't have what the reports were from 21, because he just started.
But you just have a copy and outline your.
But not the reports, he'd know just what was due, but nothing about what the reports are.
The, well, the information, like the perder is the one I finished, but I just took the number she gave me and plugged them in. I don't even know if the number's good or not, that's what she sent, so the perder's what I was able to get, but like the, the federal COVID project, where you're supposed to use the funds for, to revenge COVID and for health reasons. And her treasurer's report, she didn't even put you, you received a check, and what they did with the money isn't even in any of the minutes.
So the deposit of that money was never?
In the treasurer's report, it was in her private books, but her private books and the county and borough books are different.
You take it, you know that, you count them, and this is part of what she sent, now, a lot of it is indecipherable, that's a fact, you can all attest to that, so for him to, it just scratched out, but we don't have what you had from last year, the actual reports, so Charlie's starting to go from scratch.
But you download, you download the.
But he needs the information to put in there, he didn't have, he didn't have any of the codes or anything, and they were wrong, and so that's what we asked for, the codes to get in to all of these things were forthcoming, that was the big problem, but he is trying to rectify everything and get it done, but, see, this, half the things, you can't tell what the individual's name is or anything.
Yeah, but she wrote schemes on there for like a past user word, but it wasn't the user word, it was something else.
See, that's why he's having problems.
So, and, and she doesn't write what's a user word and what's a password, you know, she doesn't write what it's to.
And the agency is different.
You know, I, I tried all these different things and around to see if I could get in, but, you know, essentially, I had to try and get whoever's at the source to help me, but, you know, some of them, it's hard to get a hold of some of them, you know, and sometimes they draw, and like call the IRS, every time you call the IRS, you get a different answer, depends on who's picking up the phone, so that's basically what I'm going through now.
See, that's why he's having a problem, because they should have been done from end of the year from Danny, but then he didn't have the proper code, so he has to contact each agency to get the actual reports, so he can finish them, and he's working diligently and might embrace helping.
And like the COVID report that, even though it was due in April, it was for the 2021 project, so, because apparently they're supposed to give the borough $17,000, I mean, as far as I know, we only received almost eight, so I don't.
Yes, so all of these were 2021 reports that Demi Travis was hired to do, paid for, and did not do.
And since council's having such a hard time getting reports done because of lack of paperwork from the 2021 council, previous council, and they don't seem to know anything about it, would it be beneficial for you guys to make a motion to have her come before council with all of you and explain where everything is, her and her mother both?
Well, if he explains it.
And it's gonna, her gonna get the same response that we have gotten from all these letters that she's been sent from Mr.
Yeah, the borough spent money hiring Mr. Bojey to write her.
What we probably should do is, I don't know, bring suit for breach of contract, she got paid for stuff she didn't do. I don't know, which that would cost, or what?
The whole cost.
How efficacious it would be?
Well, if they feel it's a subpoena, why don't you subpoena her to come before you guys and explain where everything is?
You can subpoena somebody about a lawsuit. He was always.
Whoa, 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 whoa.
That's a lie.
You, you mean me, me and my attorney back in 2007, don't you remember that?
No, for what?
Wait, maybe.
For what? To cover up Bucks Bridge, the wall project, and Laura fudging $5,000, $5,400 lying in Penn State, so then they formed a committee, which was Earl, Freddie Roan, you wanted to put me on the committee, and I didn't, I didn't want to go on the committee, because I knew it was just harassment to people, and then they put on Art Cop once he come on, and then you subpoenaed us all, there was five of them, since I was the mayor, I stood up there for everybody, and then these clowns ended up subpoenaing me in August, we subpoenaed them in August, and there was no lawsuit going on then, it was just a cover up.
And you accused them of misseasoning.
Oh, yeah, and, and you know what, I even got a lot of findings that these guys come up with.
Jack, I'm not ready to this, I'm not ready.
Years ago.
We're, we're well beyond what we're supposed to be going.
Yeah, well, that statement, you can't subpoena somebody if you don't have a lawsuit, there was no lawsuit then, you subpoenaed, we had to go down to the courthouse, and as the mayor, I said in on it, on the subpoenas, and then they ended up subpoenaing. You know that, Kirk.
Jack, that was because it was a special statute that said you could do that, that was a specific statute rule provision.
What was that special statute?
I don't know, it was back then, how do we do this?
I do remember, yeah.
You had a lawyer, Jack.
Okay.
I had to go get, but you were my lawyer, because I was the mayor, so you shouldn't, like you're the lawyer, then you get.
Huh? When there's a contract, you get your own lawyer.
But I had to pay for it, the borough wouldn't pay for it.
Did you present a bill?
Did you advise me? No, these guys, when, when I'm the mayor, you're my lawyer.
Okay.
Okay, I'm suggesting, let me just try and find tech sources again.
Each agency can get all the reports, tell them you want the actual reports, and add all of this documentation from 2021, you want the actual documentation that came from the past council in 2021, and that way you have it, and you can file the end of year reports and get their advice, and it's, you see, it's a real struggle for them, because we don't have anything.
See, the thing is, I could have used the new password, but then I would have access to their files.
Right, and that's what we need access to the past files.
See, the history of how it was done. Can I make a suggestion? Why don't you and Charlie just call them up and say, listen, can you help me out home?
Oh, well, that's.
Call the boroughs up and see if they'll just.
Well, he's going to each agency, and he's giving all the. He did that, he did that already, and it's not been, so, all right, Charlie's trying his best, he's going to get all the end of year reports, he's going to get all the actual documentation from each agency and go from there, and I'm sure Ray is quite willing to help him out, aren't you?
Of course.
So going back to what you had on the COVID money, I ended up, because you had talked to DCED, I ended up calling DCED, and they come back, and I asked them for the application, and it was just a simple application that you and Demi filled out, last meeting, you said you knew nothing about the COVID money that come in, and we were talking $8,000, it was actually $17,000, you got $8,000, like, last year, $8,000 this year? You don't know nothing about it, even though your name was all worth your name?
I did not.
Okay.
So, so, you should address that, what did they, what were asking for?
Well, that's, that's right.
Okay.
That's right, all right, so Charlie's working diligently, Ray helped him, he did tweet, he did reach out to Demi and try to get some assistance, and that's what he did, so now he's going to each agency, he's getting all the past documentation, then accessing all the files, so we know exactly what went on. Okay, and are there any public comments? Ray?
I have a public comment, as judge of elections, we all know, election's coming up in November, please get out and vote, but also, we always need workers, it's a very slow, but fun day, and you can be part of democracy, so if anybody is interested in working the election, Richard knows how much of fun it can be, if anybody is interested in, in working with me on the election, please reach out to me. Thanks.
Thank you, anyone else?
Well, regarding about elections, my husband, David, was in the market, I just straight. Why is he sitting there when he lost the election by the people of the borough and appointed by him as a councilman, when other people were interested? Is that democracy? Is that legal? It's legal.
It was legal up until Kirk didn't take his oath, and then it went back and apparently hit somebody postace or something, because at the January 3rd meeting, Kirk did say, I didn't need to take my oath, I was appointed.
Yeah.
And that's why. Our lawyer just didn't present it well enough at court, that's all. If they had have put Mr. Roan on the stand, and then questioned a few of the others, it would have been.
And that's, does anyone else have any other comments?
Yeah, I have some pictures I've taken of the town hall over by the creek, I'm going to submit them in a letter to the borough, and I'd like them to be recorded in the minutes that that building is an unsafe building, if anybody has anything in there of any value, they better get it out before it collapses.
It is unsafe, and that's really sad, because that's historical, and it could have been restored had someone had done it yourself.
I know, I know, one thing is, I think it's a civic association has all the luminaires in there, if that building collapses, they'll go down the creek, so.
Okay, I'll make sure, I'll make sure.
I took some pictures, I'll send them, and I want them on file.
Okay, thank you.
I had asked to be an adult authority, if that's something we could file for a grant, she said no.
Because it could have historically, it was a historical building, there even used to be a jail, so it could have been years ago renovated and used as a historical building if it had been slightly, sort of that way.
I know at one time, there was quite a bit of lumber in there that was, I think it was chestnut.
Chestnut, there is chestnut lumber, which is.
But I don't know if it's any good or not.
Probably not now.
But there is also some road signs in there, fence posts, chain link fence, I don't know.
I'll have to look into that, thank you.
I'll, as we, I brought up the mayor several times to the council back 18, 20, one when I was on as mayor, but we should do something about that building, get someone to take it down.
Right.
It's an eyesore, it's a safety issue now, you have to put brick, chimney.
Yeah, the brick, the brick starts lighting up, that roof, it'll come down right now.
And it's right next to the road in the.
The doors in the building, it's open.
The problem with that building, if it does go down, there's going to be a number of lawsuits, levy to borough council, or any damages if that jams up the bridge and close homes, so the borough will sue.
What about looking into it to see if we could get some cost?
Get some estimates, everyone must know someone who does that kind of work, and get some estimates, bring them to the next meeting, so that we can take care of the problem, I mean, if everyone willing to do that, Jack, you want to head a committee and fix some people and look into cost estimates?
Yeah, we can just hire, or look at a couple, not hire, look at a couple contracts, see what it would take to get that down.
Right, just get some estimates and then say, okay.
I don't know about getting any of this stuff out, it's pretty dangerous in there, but maybe there'd be a way that, to try to get some documents, there's a lot of old documents.
There's a lot of old documents in there.
I think anything that's upstairs is going to be too old and need to be touched, because I don't think, and we can for years. Right now, the, the right side of the building is caving into the center, and if anybody tries to go up there, it could be a very dangerous zone, where there's Michael Icon, and you don't know that, and the middle's gone, the middle's actually caved in.
Well, we'll get a couple.
I'll make a motion, I make a motion to allow Jack out and get estimates for demolition of the old town hall.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor, Kirk? Darrell?
Yes.
Keith Payne, yes.
Jack, yes.
Kale, yes.
Stuck out, yes.
Okay.
Darrell Haines Jr., yes.
Okay, costume, okay, all right. For any other public comments? Let's move on to old business, we must sign the, approve signing the Thompson House. Let's move on to old business. We must sign the approved signing the Thompson hose contracts. It's the standard contract. Anyone wants to read it, everything's the same as it's always been.
We read it last.
Right. And I have made a motion that we, this evening, contract signed so I can get it back to Chad. One is ours to keep. The other goes back to.
Was the motion made last month? Is this signed yet?
There. But. There's nothing.
There was already a motion made and passed to sign that.
But there's nothing in the minutes of states that and that I could find. I thought it was, but.
Says motion to accept the 2020 Thompson hose contract. Motion passed.
Yes.
Okay.
What page is that?
That was on page four of the law.
Okay, thank you. All right, status of the borough audit. We don't have that. Any reports?
On the roads, I know there's a couple of roads. I guess it was back to what your contracts were that were tied into 2023. Is there anything that we can do to fix roads outside of your contracts that you voted in last year?
What are you referring to?
Well, it's the Pommard Road. There's a back lip coming up onto the road and it's got quite a few poples in it. That would need to be modified on it.
Anything else on roads?
Jacob's Roads. Been a few weeks since I could know of that. That would be pretty rough date.
About the other roads?
All the other roads should be pretty good except for the bottom of Penn Hill.
Constant Lake Road, they need the sides opened up up on the bamboo.
Oh, yeah.
Car, one car is off going through there. Just in that bamboo area.
So your contracts last year, how were they working? You've been having Thompson again contract change, correct?
Right now, Thompson's got a contract through Bucks Road, Jacob's letter, and you're not going to wait till this time.
But what's Thompson Township saying when they're going to work the roads or under contract with them?
They sometimes do. I always work those roads. That's what they've done.
Have you been in contact with Alex?
I have not talked to Alex in quite some time.
Were you talking to Alex to see if we could redo the contracts or?
I haven't talked to him. I haven't got a hold to talk to him to have conversation with him.
When's been the last time you talked to him to know what he was doing for his river?
It's been numerous months.
That's a big thing. The roads were tied up because the previous council locked us into with certain contractors until May of 2023.
And we don't know if we're going to Thompson, yes.
What's the deal with Scott Township?
Just for us.
Well, they're supposed to be with the Fairmont and the Kellogg. They were, they're still in contract to 2023, according to the minutes.
Are you sure about that? I believe Scott's in the letter of the land last fall. But they're not all under working.
So they're all done with their contracts? The contract that you guys signed or?
Right now, I guess.
So did the previous council sign that we're out of that contract or not locked in?
I believe the contract is present. They can take it out of there at their discretion.
Did they ever vote that the previous council could get out of that, or did we address that?
Yes, as well.
The 2023 contract.
Did they have the option to, they have the option to opt out? Second road doesn't need to vote on it. That's up to Scott Township.
Could you get us a copy of that contract?
You can have Charlie contact Scott Township, Chief Secretary.
You don't have one?
No, I don't have one in my back pocket. No, I don't carry one. I'm not secretary. Don't forget about the dust control, Keith and New Jack are supposed to maintain towards this moment. Yes, would you report?
That's right.
And I didn't do anything with dust control. Did you do anything, Keith?
I got contact from only one contractor. That is Bonham. I spoke to Jared. And it is $795 per ton to spread, but due to the travel, they want a five-ton purchase minimum.
And how much is that?
It was $795 per ton, but again, for the distance they need to travel, he wanted a five-ton minimum.
But something that has to be done for the safety of the individuals that live on the road. And if that's all that we have, all those that live on dirt roads, which that's all it's like of harbor. All of harbor roads are dirt. We have seven miles of dirt road.
How much coverage do you get out of a ton?
I can't speak to that.
Actually, you don't need any on Thompson Wicker from Charlie's, which Jacobs goes off of that. There's no houses above Charlie and the county to the borough. That's what he deals with. It's the only thing that would be saving people from walking if the car goes by. By the tons of dirt.
What's that? He just stated it was in calcium form. I don't know whether it's liquid or flake, so. He said that they only do calcium and that was per ton, but there would be a minimum due to the travel.
That's a lot of money.
I'm afraid it's going to go.
Be even better.
You contacted Thompson Township. Who put it on last year? The Bux Road.
I don't think they're going to put it on next year.
My previous year then, around the fourth, you guys put calcium one up there. Maybe you can talk to them. So Thompson do it then or do you?
I don't know. I don't know. For sure. But then two or three years ago.
Did you check if Thompson had anything better? Did you try Thompson?
Uh, I did not. I did not.
I did. Contact your joint, your spell. A lot of times they work together.
I'd like the, the distance to be shorter.
I'll take a contact to Thompson Township.
Jack, is there any exception request to township?
No, no, we'll just finish.
Eric, do you think our township would be interested?
No. No, my township? Your man or?
Do you guys get your calcium down there? Do you need your calcium?
Preston.
Wow. Preston has more.
Brian, those are dirt roads again. They have camps and everything else. Maybe you should check them down.
Yeah, Dave did. They can touch it. Preston. The road grants. Are there any other committee reports? Road grants? Charlie?
On the status of the Surfer Grant, 71.
Well, the update on the road, any committee reports, but update on the road grants, that's all?
Well, that would be them. That's a contract.
Stephens, Center Redevelopment, Redevelopment signed it and Pikeus actually made it, signed it and entered into the contract to do the grants for the three roads.
You just got, you got the addendum, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so then that's all set. That work is going to be started?
Yes, sometime here. I would say in July, like this.
Okay. Ray?
And they agreed that the contract rate, like whatever the negotiated price was, there was no, it's not over that, right?
On the grants, that's between the redevelopment authority who bid it out and the people that bid it.
Okay.
All right, that goes to that.
Can I, can I ask which roads are under that grant?
Yeah, Penn Hill, Kellogg, and Bucks.
Oh, Kellogg. Make them that.
And Bucks. Full mark.
And tell them about getting anything down the road. Because Stefano Road is really.
Okay, I got a quote from machine higher from Bill Pikeus here.
For this Stefano Road?
Well, for all the roads that need to have a grading, except the ones that Thompson's under contract for. That would be Stefano, Kellogg, Penn Hill, and Carpenter Road.
I don't think you do permanent road. That was never into. That's a fake borough road. That's something we've got to address.
There's nothing to address. It's on the liquid fuels.
Just because you can't give you liquid fuels, and that road was never, was never a rural road. They just go and do a, what do they call it? A resolution map. Have their surveyor come in and do a resolution map and make this road an official road if we don't have a dedication.
They didn't even look for fuel store.
Yes.
You gotta use those ones on roads.
That's what I'm saying. This is like almost a half mile road that's rated that was never a rural road. They just rated it.
There was no road.
You could go through all the borough's documents and look for Carpenter Road. It was never Carpenter Road. These guys extended it off of Penn Hill. That was already gave. It didn't need 1944. Because somebody had pulled the wool over Penn that size, plain and simple.
You don't want to hear it. Because the Penn that would disappear, it was surveying and ending, satisfied Penn that's qualifications for liquid fuels.
But before you got liquid fuels for it, when was the de-identification done because it was not the borough road? And what road did you guys decide? When did you decide on making a new road? And you were calling it a pre-scheduled road or whatever it is?
Probably happened. Somebody had to probably research.
Penn that, that research, because they got maps going back.
They're saying that this is a rural road?
Yeah, 100 years ago.
So.
There has to be a.
You're telling me that's a road 100 years ago?
If you read the landowners' deeds that are adjacent to that road, each deed will require the Carpenter Road is.
Matter of fact, I have read those deeds and there is no road on that deed. So that would be Eddie Green and Grace Watson and Amaris.
You're reading different roads that are deed to nine.
Yeah.
They're all.
Could you give me a copy of those deeds?
Do it in the courthouse.
Yeah, we know.
We can have Charlie request and get them in the courthouse.
So what deeds did they give?
Whoever is adjacent to that Carpenter Road.
Well, you read them, so you must know. So you tell me who the landowners are.
Contact the courthouse and they can refer to you who's adjacent of that Carpenter Road.
Well, you have a term.
Carpenter Road is a true road. It struck into the township.
You got to scan that.
I have a question about this. Well, one thing about this information from Pikeus, we need to put the correct borough address on it. So if you want to let them know.
Okay, I can do that.
So then the correspondence actually comes to the secretary and not private individuals.
We need all the addresses changed to the borough.
It didn't come with private individuals. It was sent to me as a council member.
But it needs to go through.
But I can, I can have that corrected.
My other question is, part of this grant covers the Kellogg Road. And then this covers the Kellogg Road. What's the grant doing that we still need, have to work on the Kellogg Road too?
It needs to be graded. That, that and Penn Hill both need.
What's the grant taking care of?
The grade will take care of the materials.
It's just giving materials.
Well, machine higher to put the material down, yes.
The, okay, you have a machine that's putting the material down, but the machine that would grade the material, they don't just dump it there?
They, they don't, they don't grade it. It's put down with the paper.
Well, then if it's put down with the paper, then it's smooth. And you go on any road that's been done with the paper, then the road's smooth. But here it doesn't say what he's doing and what road. Now, does this cover the roads that are listed because those, like Stefano Road, some of them are really that?
So what do you do? Does it mean a road committee?
I, I got it as a council member.
We have a road committee.
They could have called somebody that prices it. They had to.
The purpose of a committee is to work together in conjunction with one another, call one another, contact one another and just, you know, talk about it so that you can bring everything to the council, so we have all of the information.
Yeah, the contract actually states that the boroughs responsible for pre-grading of those Kellogg.
Okay, pre-grading, okay.
They're just cleaning them up so they can come down to the project.
Okay, so that it's pre-grading. It's not after. Okay. That, that's a good clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver, for answering the question.
That's it. That's what he's talking about.
Okay, but so.
Before they do their project work, that their relationship.
Okay, thank you.
Would there be any conflict of interest with you, Darrell, that you've got a special agreement with the borough on your road through your lawsuit? That you've got a special agreement that has to be done? And Darrell's working with a council member on his road because there's a special agreement, you know, custom agreement that he made?
I know there was a lawsuit. I know he was lost in a lawsuit. He lost to a lawsuit.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about a federal lawsuit.
There's no order. There's a court order that the borough has to maintain.
You want order the borough maintain that road. That's the case either.
To his best intentions.
You actually was the attorney for Darrell when you took it to court in 2017.
Back then, back then.
No, 2017.
Seventeen, all we did was secure the objection, but everybody agreed to his vote. That's all we did in 17. The lawsuit you're talking about that established liability was years before that.
No, I'm talking about the agreement that the borough, Kirk and a couple of them, the three, three council members agreed upon agreement with Darrell on his, his federal lawsuit in 2016. And then in 17, you as Darrell's attorney took it to the court. And because that was a 2013 lawsuit that was never taken care of. So you asked for a court order on behalf of Darrell so you could take it back to the federal court, correct?
It's necessary to get him. The deal was already come.
Well, but it never went to court. It was just a.
It had to be taken to the state court to get a monetary award from the.
No, because the attorney told me that the reason was the judge did not sign that agreement because it never went to court.
Jack, I don't know what the attorney told you. I don't know.
That was the girl.
That was my limited role in that suit.
But you did represent Darrell.
I did, on behalf of Mr. Haynes, to get the amount that was agreed upon to be paid reduced to a judge.
So you did represent Darrell against the borough, though. Does anybody represent the borough in that lawsuit?
The borough was not opposed to this because they made an agreement to pay him.
I know.
It was a settlement.
The big farce.
I don't know. All I know is, I don't know. I was asked to do it, but I didn't.
And we're still paying.
Wait a moment. The borough agreed to, made an agreement to pay this amount instead of.
Going to court, yes.
Yes. Why?
Well, I'll tell you why.
No, I just wondered. I didn't, I didn't know about it.
We had to go before a mediator.
Okay, you didn't have to. You chose to.
The process is our board.
All right, let Kirk speak, please, to clarify. I wasn't aware, so I just need to know. Okay.
We had to go before mediator.
Okay.
You would go to Darrell's attorney and the attorney that represented us, who was it? You got him in.
Lavery Law.
Huh?
Lavery Law was.
Lavery Law?
No, Lavery.
Lavery Law?
Okay.
Okay. He's the one that represented the borough.
Okay.
Okay. They went back and forth and back and forth. Lou, you were there. You were one of the cream to do this. Me, Lou, Mary Emily.
I was there.
Okay.
So how did you get your votes? Mary Emily was the mayor.
Well, this was just a vote to settle it out of court because the mediator told us if this went to court, we would cost the borough a lot more money. So this is why we settled.
Okay, I just, I wasn't, I needed that clarification. I wasn't.
So, so let me ask this because I have asked this before. And you were the president and you signed for it. You constructed everything up. When and how did the borough ever violate Darrell's rights of $100,000? Explain that.
You did that. You didn't work the road.
I did that? Explain how I did that.
When you were on council.
How did I do it?
That's when that lawsuit started, when you were on council.
That's exactly right, when the lawsuit started. Because the lawsuit, that wasn't a lawsuit either.
You tell me why.
Let's get back to business.
Because, because the only thing that was brought up, let me finish. Only thing that was brought up was, because our attorney was going to vacate Kellogg. It went to court. We didn't vacate the road, so that was it.
Darrell had known. No, no, you lost the vacation twice.
That's right, you lost.
You lost twice, Jack. You went to court to vacate the road, and the judge ruled against you in the fall, October, November. Then you went back the following May and asked the judge to remove his order so you could vacate it again.
You're absolutely wrong. You still are, that's vacant, asked to vacate twice. That never was, it was a complete lie. Our attorney was going to vacate the road and come back, that we could not vacate the road. All right, so you prevailed in court, it was even in the court documents that you prevailed. But then you went to federal court. So when you went to federal court, that's when our insurance dropped it, because you sued, and plus you were on the council. So you caused the borough our own insurance, because you were on there. And then you guys had the control of council. So you went in there, and then you made this agreement.
If you 15 council, when you was on, would have worked the road.
And we did work the road. We did work the road. There's bills, everything worked the road. And the other thing is, that on the, when he went to court with us, he didn't have nothing to actually go against the borough.
All right. All right, so that's clarified. I do know there's documentation that Darrell's not allowed to sue over the road again. I have that documentation, somebody, I don't know, a brigade company, anyway.
I didn't do it differently, I have a court order, and I have a writ to enforce the court order.
All right, so now that was clarified, I thank you, I didn't know what is not.
Can you present me a copy that where I can sue you?
So, all right, let's move on.
Sure she doesn't have it in her back pocket though.
Actually, I do, actually, I, yes, excuse me, excuse me, yes, I do.
So, back to this Pikes thing, it needs to specify which road.
Well, I'll make a motion to amend the amendment to hire Pikes excavating to do roadwork overseen by Darrell Haynes and Keith Payne for Stefano Road, Fairmount, Kellogg, Penn Hill, and Carpenter Road.
Why wouldn't that be overseen by the road committee?
Right, the road committee.
That was my motion.
Yeah, but you're not, there's, Jack's on, Jack's on.
That's what I put on the floor.
But why wouldn't you want the entire road?
The only non-discussion is the second, if the second, not second.
There's no second, so there's no second on this one.
Well, the S for second.
Kirk was second on the floor.
Not necessarily. All right, so you're excluding the rest of the road committee?
That was my motion I made.
Is there a second on Darrell's motion?
I'll second that motion.
You've heard of a motion that's on the floor? That Darrell and Keith oversee the roadwork on all of the roads? All those in favor?
Can we specify which roads?
Fairmount, Kellogg, Penn Hill, and Carpenter.
Wait a minute, what about Stefano Road?
Stefano, excuse me, and Stefano.
Jacob Ladder.
I forgot about Jacob's ladder.
Jacob Ladder, Beach Creek, Cox and White, and Buck Road are under contract with Thompson Township at this time.
That's right, I was wrong, that's right, that is right.
Well, about Beach Creek, or Stefano.
Yeah, he did have that, okay, Kirk?
Yeah, you for a vote?
Yes.
Kirk, yes. Darrell being just, Keith being yes.
Jack, no.
Gil, no.
Kristen, no.
I'll make junior, yes.
Charlie, you start that. Okay, you didn't get it wrong. The status of, Charlie, you've already explained about the SLFR.
Yeah, but like, I'm trying to think of the road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Hold on.
Last year we finished up, Bill Pikes finished up the grant on Fairmount Road. So.
Last year you finished up work?
Well, this year we finished up. From last year, and so last year when he started, I was presented this from Bill Pikes, that Mary Ann and Darrell wrote up that wanted to give me. And it was a consent lease and re-lease agreement. And what I wanted, they wanted me to sign this, being a landlord. So I didn't sign it. So since Darrell, you made this up last year and wanted me to sign it, why don't we have you sign the same agreement that you wanted me to sign? Since we got our grants this year along your property.
If the heat was, was right away, I will.
What's that?
If it was on the right way, I will.
So, why did this have to other right away from my project? For the Fairmount project, along my property? If there wasn't to just harass me, what was this for?
Because of the location of the sluice pipe discharge.
So why don't we get an agreement with you? Because you put some new sluice pipes in last fall. Matter of fact, you got one coming right out of your metal up there. You put a couple of new sluice pipes in, on the council last year. So, I would like to make a motion that we have Darrell sign the agreement that he wanted other landowners to sign last year for the grant on.
Motion is on the floor that Darrell signed the agreement as the landowner because of the grants for the, how does it say that? Road-only entity. While that is their lands for the purpose of the grant.
Yep, so it would be changed from Jack and Captain Jones to Darrell.
We have a second? You're also giving it, all right. Does anyone need the motion?
Anybody want to read this first before you vote?
Kirk?
Yes.
Darrell?
I'm staying.
Keith Payne, no.
Jack, yes.
Gil, yes.
Kristen, yes.
I'm making junior, no.
The motion's been passed. And that will have to be amended, the names and the address, et cetera, et cetera. And then, Charlie, if you would amend this to read.
That was what presented to me, so we'll change that to Darrell's. They thought it was needed last year.
Charlie, you have a question about the SLFR?
Yeah, the State Local Recovery Funds Program, through the main things, it's supposed to do, despite the pandemic, and support families and businesses struggling with its public health and economic impacts, maintain vital public services, even amid declines in revenue resulting from the crisis, build a strong resident and equitable recovery by making investments that support long-term growth and opportunity. And from what I know, it was just used to put coverts, replace the coverts in Kellogg Road. So, I think if I have to fill out the report, I think the government's going to have a hard time swallowing that. And that, because when they wanted anything done as far as water management, it was supposed to manage, like wastewater plant that could cause diseases and stuff. So I don't see how to replace the coverts on Kellogg Road can apply. Also, there's a problem that the rest of the committee and the public never knew about the project. The Treasurers' Report didn't have the funds documented that we received them. And anytime it was brought up in minutes, it was shelved by Darrell. So, I have a feeling we have a lot of problems with that grant.
Or trying to get paid at all. And this wasn't half supposed to be paid this year? It's a 70%.
Yeah, half was paid this year, it was almost $8,000. And now we're supposed to get the rest of the $8,000 this year.
Okay, so, just for clarification, the money, this $8,000 was sent to the borough. It was never put on the Treasurers' Report, so the public never knew about it.
Yes, that's correct. And then other members didn't know about it, not even the mayor.
Coverts were replaced on Kellogg Road, and that was the only work done with that money?
Yes.
And that was never brought before the borough and voted on, as far as we know?
No.
So someone unilaterally made a decision to do work on Kellogg Road? With a borough money, because that was money sent through the borough money?
Yeah. Federal funds.
Why don't we put the package again?
General funds, I believe.
Who signed the check to pay for the work, do we know that?
Well, I know the day after they got the money, they bought the coverts at New Milford Harbor. And I believe.
Well, I assume they were paid with a check, right?
Yes.
So who signed that check? Who was part of that illegal dealing there? Do we know that?
Uh, yeah, I have a copy of the check, I have it.
I would assume the then-president.
Well, yeah, with two signatures, yeah.
So this, do you have to send documentation to get the other $8,000?
Yeah, they want to see what you did with the money.
And this is one of the reports that you still need to fill out, and, okay.
To get the other money, and he has to provide the documentation. But you have that, you have that now?
Yeah.
You have everything.
But I know the government's been complaining that so far a billion dollars of this covert money has been misappropriated.
A billion dollars?
Yes, a billion dollars.
But you have documentation of how it was spent, though?
Some of it, some of it, we can't find all of the money that was spent. But I suspect it's between Chris Miller, probably did the work, Bill Pikes dropped off some of the stones to cover the things, because they actually wrote down where they had it delivered to. And.
So is this agency then looking into this, where everyone spent the money?
Yeah, the Department of Treasury.
Department of Treasury, where the money went, okay.
Now, what, you've got the old council members here, why don't you go through and ask?
I was just gonna ask Kirk, do you remember signing any checks? Has he ever paid for this thing there?
Well, I think the application is.
For Pikes, yeah, I remember signing.
For the coverts? But, but it wasn't voted on?
I believe it was voted on.
But it stopped it in the minutes, it was a little process. And the other council members, I even recall it. And it wasn't, like I said, she was keeping two books, one for herself and one for the Treasurers' Report. So they would have never seen the check came in.
Could I see those, yes.
Wait a minute. What did you reiterate? What did you say?
I say Demi kept her books, one for her and one for the borough.
Well, they jive, Demi, it was the same, they don't jive.
That's one of the problems with the audit.
Wait a minute, they don't jive. That's totally, you cannot do that. You can't have two sets of books and they don't jive.
All kinds of business.
Lock in the house.
You can't, no, it's just simply not legal, nor is it morally, right. That's what can't do that. I'm the secretary of treasury of my church, I have one set of books. And you don't have another set saying, well, here's $50, but I'm putting 25 in. You can't do that. All right, so where are, you have both sets of books, sets of books. So that's something that's going to have to be really looked into, because this is not right. If you have two sets of books.
That might have to be charged against Demi's check.
Well, we're going to have to have this investigated, because if you have two sets of books, and, first of all, you should never have two sets of books. And if they don't jive, what would be the reasoning behind that?
For our money, right?
For our, do we do it?
There's a bank's own money.
Why don't we just do it this way? We've got one, two, three, four, five council members from last year when they filed for this money. Why don't we ask each and every one of them what they know about this money, what it was filed for, for the COVID money? $17,000 and change. So let's get this on record. What each council member knew about this? And what was it for? Because like Charlie said, it was a design, you had to have a designed thing, what the money was used for. So.
In particular, if the age of someone is investigating.
DCED has sent me a copy of the application. I don't have it here tonight. But Kirk's name was on it, because he was the head of the organization or however they had it on, and Demi signed it. So Kirk, you and Demi apparently went through with it, or they left you out and just attached your name to it. So what do you know about the?
I'm not commenting with the point that I see in this place. I'm not con, not commenting.
Jason, you were a council member. I was the mayor and I knew nothing about it, we'll make that one fair.
What do you know? I know nothing about it.
You know, because you didn't.
You didn't know nothing about it, so that's a compliment.
Absolutely not.
Darrell, what do you know about it?
I'd like to see the paperwork that was sent in.
So, so with all the sluice work that you did up on the Kellogg Road last summer and fall, what monies did you use? Was that for the COVID money that was used on the covert? The sluice pipes up there? Because Charlie says, the day after that money come in, you guys purchased.
Did that, well, maybe, did that cover some of the, well, Scott, Tomship work?
Well, what's Tomship work? I don't either, so I mean, you went and brought it up, so what are you referring to?
All right, that's just an answer.
So Darrell, what do you know about how this money is spent?
What about you, Keaton, do you know anything about it?
At this point, I'd like to see the minutes that supposedly don't have any record of it, as well as the other.
The only thing is, they wired it up for discussion
Okay.
in November, when all of it was already spent. And Darrell said it's paid.
And I know several times when you guys had motions that you were going to get 300 foot of pipe and 500 foot of pipe. And I know Jason had asked once or twice, or I did, like, where is this, all this pipe going to go? And it was like, we'll have to let you know.
There was motions for pipe to be determined. Okay.
Yeah, to be determined.
At this point, there's, seems to be a little inconsistency between what's being stated. There's no motions now, there's motions for pipes. So until I see the record, I don't want to make any comments.
No, I think it's not about just the pipe.
And the part, excuse me.
Where the money.
Right. And in terms of this report, I know there may be concerns, but until the report is filed, and until we hear back from DCED or the state with regard to the monies, then at this point, there is no issue, until the state says there's an issue.
Well, make sure you tell that to the FBI man, it shows up on your doorstep.
Do we have a date, do we have a date range of when, like, these checks were written?
Yes, they came in July. Came in July.
This was in July, okay.
And is there a date where they voted on the sluice pipes?
They were never voted.
So I just heard that there were motions with regard to sluice pipes.
Well, they were, okay. They were, but I don't see anything about the project.
It's easy enough to go through on the videos and see on the minutes and just, why don't we have?
And one thing should be brought up, that the grants that they filed for, there was three sluice pipes to go on the Kellogg Road, two sluice pipes to go on the Penn Hill Road, and one sluice pipe to go on the Buck Road. And now with Darrell and Keith rewriting them, there's no sluice pipes on these projects. It's only material. That's just probably noted too, that's because by change.
Are you still talking about, hold on, hold on. Are you talking about this SLRF grant, or are you back on those? Okay, but right now we were discussing that, and that's another issue, that if they change the specs, that's something that needs to be addressed separately with. Charlie's concern was that the state and federal government are concerned where the monies have gone. And you have the application, you said, the actual application?
DCED said something.
All right, so that we need to peruse that? So that we can see everything that's gone in. The federal government's already investigating things, and Charlie has to finish these reports to get the other $8,000? So move on from there. Now, what was your question about the road grants?
No, the thing was that, that's why they had to amend the precedent for the grant, because they already put the sluice pipes in, so they didn't need to put them in twice.
I see, so that was.
There's a locking down to release it, yeah.
You could be smarter than the FDR.
I won't say that. Okay, so then they had to be amended because those pipes were already done with this SLFR grant? Okay.
Yeah, that's quite the point being is.
Oh, that's why, all right.
The grants got totally changed.
Now, Charlie, the laser printer, did you purchase that?
No, I purchased the ink that was approved to, uh, purchase last time, but I haven't received it yet. But I haven't, I haven't, um, purchased the laser, and I'll try and do it this week.
Well, I know you did, you also did, so... All right, moving on, is there any other unfinished business?
Yes, President Redmond was supposed to submit receipts for materials bought for the directions memorial. Has she brought them?
President Redmond's seen them, she forgot.
I appreciate that from next time, because a motion was made to reimburse you up to a certain amount.
Okay, now this is what, this is your, oh, this is what you need to be assigned?
Yes.
Okay, that's already there, okay. Is there any other unfinished business?
Yes, I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion to amend the agenda to purchase 2A modified from Pyke's excavating. Not to exceed $20 a ton and hire Chris Miller to fill potholes, dump truck at $100 an hour and skid steer at 75.
For where?
Uh, the road that got potholes need filled, Stefan with one.
Yeah, Stefan with the...
They need a couple loads up on the end, Stefan Road, that's just horrible.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any question or motion that is in need to, uh...
So who determines how the roads are done?
That was in the previous motion of Keith and I.
That, that was, that motion was defeated? Yes, right.
No, it wasn't. Is it time, is it?
That, that motion passed four to three.
Yes.
Is this public comment for this motion?
He made a motion.
And the second.
It was seconded, so yes, before any official action is taken, we vote, public can comment on it.
Right, absolutely.
So I guess that my, my question was, I appreciate filling potholes, and I'm sure you're an expert on the roads, but as a taxpayer, it would be nice to know where the potholes are and like, I mean, I'm happy to pay to fix them, but like, just saying, fix the potholes, how much modified are we gonna buy, like, and how do I know it went into all the poth-? You know what I mean? Like, so maybe we just, is there any way to put down what roads we wanna fix, or where on the roads we wanna fix?
Well, we can run the road and, um, when Chris fills, and we can list what ones he built the potholes on.
So we're...
That would be great, thank you.
Are we just giving a blank slate to buy however much he wants to?
Well, shouldn't the road committee go out and do a general estimate of how many square feet are due to be...
We'll talk to other parts of the road committee.
I can modify my motion, not to exceed eight, it will, eight triad to what's modified.
Eight triad.
Eight?
Eight, okay.
Charlie, this is... How do you know that?
How did you come up with that?
Just number it there, just gotta have some to follow, gotta have something to respond to.
If you could clarify something for me, that the President's Parks Committee is a partner committee, and you have, you have some
Okay, thank you.
type of, uh, you don't like the entire road committee to go out and make recommendations, come back and say, well, this road's terrible, we need this, this, and this. Why? Can you explain that to me?
I believe that solicitors entered a previous meeting, that a motion to be made, as long as it passes, if it...
Well, I realize that, but I'm just asking the whys of it. I mean, why, why wouldn't you want the entire committee to go out together, look at the roads, come back and say, look, this is bad, we need this, this, and the other thing?
If they wanna call, okay, no, I, I don't have a problem with that one. If they wanna call and go out together, I don't have a problem.
But you made your motion, you said just you and Keith, and then you left
Correct.
the rest of the committee out.
Correct, to, to...
So then you're, you're, you're stripping the position of the president to name committees by making your own motions. Okay, just needed that clarification. All right, there's a motion on the floor that's been amended, would you care to restate it, Darrell?
Okay, I made a motion to purchase, I made a motion to amend the agenda up to eight, or two-way modified from Pyke's excavating, not to exceed $20 per ton, and hire Chris Miller to fill potholes, dump truck at $100 an hour and skid steer at 75.
We have a second.
Also, no.
Is there any question or motion on the floor, or any comment?
I just wanna make a public comment, I think, uh, that they should do a cubic foot analysis of the holes before they, so we get an idea, like Thompson spray paints, you know, around the holes and then guesses.
Let me duck who you're not out.
That's been done.
That guy that painted them whole, the guy that was just blowing, and he's had a little dirt bike, and he goes around painting them whole, so the state will know where to fill it.
Oh, okay.
If they ever do, all right, okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, Kathy?
Uh, if they're going, the, just the two of them are gonna do it, should the rest of council know what date, the start date is going to be, and be informed when it's gonna start and what roads they're working on in time, so everyone can go see what they're doing?
If anybody wants to vote.
There's a courtesy, I, we would like the council to know.
I want to Pyke's fills, I send in terms of his availability and Chris Miller's.
Doesn't have a problem.
Okay, that would be important, okay. Kirk?
Kirk, yes.
Darrell, he just...
What needs to be done? Gail, yes.
Kristen, other, no?
Governor, Hank, sure, yes.
And hope that yous know when the work is being done, and the rest of the road committee.
Okay, and I'd also like to make a motion to amend the agenda to have Jack Dalton and Dave Soden fill out a dirt gravel grant application for the purpose of securing grant money for Jacob Flider Road, and they can contact Wayne Conservation District to get that application and bring it back to council.
What gives you the rights to tell people what they can do?
Yeah, what, who are you? I just made a motion, so, okay.
Well, this, they don't have, they don't have to, they don't jive. They have the right to decline them.
We have comments.
Doesn't matter if...
But Dave is not a, her also member, he doesn't have to accept.
I wish it, and she gets a second, and then we discuss.
All right, Darrell, this made the motion. Do we entertain a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
What is that, what's the point of making a motion?
Well, I think he needs to hear what the motion is before he votes on it.
Yes.
Did you hear the motion that Darrell has made, and Keith has seconded? Would you care to reiterate?
I, I made a motion to amend the agenda to have Jack Dalton and Dave Soden fill out a dirt and gravel grant application for Jacob Flider Road for the purpose of securing grant money and present to council. There's roughly $177,000 that was, uh, estimated from the dirt and gravel center from Penn State for the improvement on Jacob Flider Road.
So this already started?
That was, um...
This application already started, now you wanna dump it on us?
No, no.
So how did you come up with the Penn State to come in and give you estimates?
Penn State come out and drew up the map, that's all they did, that's where it's at at this point in time.
So who contacted Penn State to come and draw up the map?
Uh, I believe Mary Ann DeBakel two years ago.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And now you, so then, this was all begun with your council, so prior to, so now you want someone else to take it over and do the rubber. But you did Kellogg Road, Penn Hill Road, you did those yourself, so why aren't you willing to go forward, you're gonna do this?
A lot of other people participate and, and...
No, come on.
Didn't, didn't.
How come you're okay with other people participating when you feel like it, but not okay with having the entire road committee participate?
This is a rejection, this isn't a mandatory, this isn't a...
Okay, but I wasn't done with my statement, Miss Payne.
Okay.
All right, let's, everything's settled?
What I'm saying is, how come it's okay to have other people participate in this instance, but when other road things are going on and we have a road committee, you purposely don't let everyone that's supposed to be involved in the road committee participate?
They will be called when Pyke starts to work on those grants, they, they can file through with him and see what the process is and what it entails.
Plus, there's the answers to the questions.
Jacob Flider Road doesn't benefit those two.
All right. There is a motion on the floor, is there any discussion? Uh, Dave, do you have any comment?
I don't think you should involve, maybe another year or so, we got three roads to be taking.
Right.
I don't think there's reason to jump into it right now.
I concur.
It's just the application issue, the work cannot be done, issue even if it's approved. It's something you've done for years.
Said it was one of the talks, what did you hear about this?
Yes, and, and that...
It wasn't. All right.
That was not approved by the commissioners.
Why are you not involved with Jack now? Aren't you on the road committee now?
She assigned me to it, now with regard to what? I'm not involved with you with regard to what?
You're not involved with Jacob Flider Road? You don't wanna be involved with Jack now? The people, Jack and council members on road committee?
Yes.
And I'm a citizen, right?
Right.
Why aren't you involved with this thing? Instead of Darrell, why don't you, why aren't you involved?
We're, we're involved. Bring in the other community members, maybe they're, they won't have issues with the way that, the way that you do your application.
What, is the road getting all the...
We got three roads, you know, we got three roads to get done.
Roads, my knowledge, correct. Where all, all applications were either started or applications were put in for every single borough road.
Jacob Flider Road shouldn't have done it before the Kellogg Road.
Jacob Flider Road really deals with the conservation due to the pitch and everything like that.
That's just...
No, no, I'm sure, if you speak to them, that's why they came out and, and wanted to do that in that specific area.
I saw that, I saw the drawing, I saw it. That's one, I showed Kirk.
Where did you refer?
Kirk denied it.
Kirk denied, he knew it.
But I can't speak for all of this, you asked me.
No, it was not, it was the whole drawing.
And I gave Mary Ann DeBakel, what she did with it, I don't know. But I just say, get the other roads done and hold off on that.
There's a motion and a second on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor, Ray, you have to come in?
Uh, I just, I just had one question. I appreciate that this is being asked for in a public meeting, um, to, to apply for, but considering the issues we've had with people not knowing what's going on, should all contracts and applications go through the secretary?
Absolutely, should through, through the secretary and the entire council. There should never be an application made or signed by anyone that the entire council...
A contract has to be signed by the president.
A contract has to be signed.
Not true. Darrell's saying the contract's a church.
Well, I know that.
I don't mind that one, but he do.
I'm aware of that feeling, but it's borough code, contracts must be signed.
In the borough code, the council president signs the contracts, but anything that comes, it reflects for the borough needs to come before the entire council. The secretary should have documentation on everything, and every member of the council should be able to peruse the documentation. That's what's legal, that's what's moral, that's what's right. Now, there is a motion on the floor, it has been seconded.
I have a question for, I guess attorney, we should. So, making this motion requiring a council member and a private citizen to do this, if the motion passes and Mr. Sullivan says, no, I'm not doing this, then what happens?
Then it doesn't get done. They're asking for a motion to have other third parties operate it, just like the motion to make the Travis girls do the reports. If that Travis girl didn't wanna do the reports...
There was still a place at the Furb at that point.
I'm saying the same thing applies to Mr. Sullivan and Mr. DeBakel.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Kirk?
Is there a second one?
There was a second on it. Keith seconded this motion.
Yes, Kirk, yes.
Darrell, he just, Keith, he just, Jack, no.
Gail, no.
Yes, I know.
Governor, yes.
And Dave, you have every right to say that you know anything to do with it.
I just feel Keith Payne's on the road committee, he should be part of it.
Right, he should be part of it.
Effective immediately...
If he's not gonna work with Jack and I, forget it, get him off the road committee completely, that's the whole, the time.
Effective immediately, I resign as on the road committee. So council note, put it on record, I want that minutes, I resign.
It doesn't matter if we're...
Actually, I will send a letter of resignation, being on the road committee.
Yeah, someone in writing, is that we have a...
Yes, I will.
Because it just would matter if...
Also, for me looking in for calcium on the roads, I resign from that too, I'm not looking at it. I'm not the road committee, I'm not looking for calcium on the roads. Appoint someone else to do that.
It doesn't matter if he's part of a board who signs, because Darrell will just make a motion, that he and Keith do something, and then the four of them will approve it.
Realize it's what they're in for, so...
So there's no point.
I've stated that, I appointed the president, appoints the committees, and then you, they supersede it. Supersede it by, because you have the majority, which is unfortunate. However, I'm, I'm sorry that you chose to resign, Jeff. Is there any other unfinished business? Yes, well, these were already approved contingent that they were done. I am signing them and putting the seal on them, the maps are being done.
I've got Pyke.
Yes.
So all the changes were made.
The changes were made, this is all, yes, and, and the motion was made to, this, these were approved contingent on everything, and Mr. Boucher says everything has been done. Yes.
So from DCED, hey, DCED has a thing, they call a letter of intent. And if you get a vote from council, and you fill this out, DCED will come in and help us out. And the mayor, one thing it has to do is have that council pass. And there are subtle things that you can, uh... Let's rerail up, so we can...
The letter of intent is submitted to the governing center for local government services to request technical assistance. By submitting this request, the municipality agrees to cooperate with the center. The governing body must approve this request for assistance by motion prior to submission. No resolution is required. Complete return the form by mail or fax. Uh, it says, and it goes on, there is finance, public works, uh, land use planning, uniform, uniform construction code, fire emergency cert. They, they, they help you with anything you need advice on. It's a service that's available, like with the council, the boroughs and things like that. The Association of Boroughs, which are very helpful.
Well, as of when Kirk was president, he could say he was getting help from DCED, which you guys never did, you never put letters out, see who I could appoint. Auditors or anything like that. Didn't need to, we did things properly.
Oh, I think.
Yeah.
So on that paper, though, you just picked the things you want them to help you with?
Yes, you choose, choose what is conducive to our borough. A lot of those things where it's small community, they don't apply, like police is out there. Right, we don't have, yeah, um...
I don't think there's any doubt. It, it's a great resource to utilize in a lot of areas. I think one thing that I see from the limited time I've been here is some informational, um, maybe educational aspect of this, to maybe do some workshops for council members to get everybody to understand how borough government works and, uh, so in a way, uh, cooperating and working together with your...
It's never gonna happen.
Not here.
That's that now.
Gavin? Everybody's just hiring.
Peruse that, and then, um, you can make a, you can entertain a motion.
What does it cost? There's a service cost?
No, I think there's no cost to it.
There is no cost, no, there's no fees. These are just services that they provide to communities.
Which items are you looking ahead and give us assistance on the town?
Well, then, some of those things...
Fine, and others worse, administration secretary, home rule, boundary changes, boundary changes should be a big one.
Right.
Uh, others, we could put some other stuff down, like how we do grants and get grants and...
Right, you can add to it.
How our COVID money was gotten. Uh, regional police, we don't have that, police management, we don't really have that, we sort of do, we know. we sort of do, we know. Uh, fire emergency services, council governments, improvements in corporation, land use planning, and uniform construction codes.
All of those would be good.
I would say, instead of checking each bar, you know, we just put a great big X, say, yep, we want all of those.
And you can add on something that you think that they could give you information on, you can add to it.
You guys wanna see it?
Sounds like it's a no-brainer, there's no force involved.
Sure, I'll make a motion that we, uh, fill this all out and send it in, and ask for help from D C D to help clean this up. And check out all the.
I'll second the motion. Is there any discussion about this?
I think it'd be a good idea, because, really, like me, I have no training, like, you know, with fire, nobody told me to separate them. I think there's some sort of code too, you're supposed to use, but I don't have any.
Right, codes and everything else, because we didn't get any documentation from last year, you would have had all of those things.
There's no network, there's no force.
Right, yeah, there's no cost involved.
So it's a no-brainer. How could you?
I mean, most corporations give training like that, the state.
Right. Kirk?
Kirk, yes. Darrell paying yes.
Keith paying yes, Jack yes.
Gail, yes.
Kristen, yes.
Donald Haynes, junior, yes.
Is there any other? Is there any other unfinished business? Yeah, this is new. All right, is there any other new business? No new business. Is there any announcements?
Uh, yeah, I think we do, we never got, nobody hired for lawn. Tom Swartz is hiring, or doing lawns, I'd make a motion that we hire Tom Swartz with the same contract that he had given us. Yeah, there's been, it's actually the same contract that's been utilized for the last, what, three, four, five years?
And Tom's been, so thus far, Tom did the ball field, and he's been paid by public, private, I mean, private contributions, so that I, my church could have their event. He spent eight hours after he finally got it mowed three times, he took down a thager, he made a makeshift wagon, and he spent eight hours picking all that excess grass off that wall field so that we could have our free event that my church did on the wall field, and he was paid by private contributions for doing that.
Help the motion down. Hire Tom and did a contract.
Do I have a second? I seconded. All those in favor, is there any comments?
Yes.
I'd like to see if that read the contract that we're.
Leave the contract, get her, get her in last month, same contract.
My question, you don't.
Same contract, you guys have been signing for, what, three or four years?
It doesn't improve the church, yeah.
No, and he won't put the church on the.
If you want the church, make a motion and pay for the church, Darrell, just make two different contracts.
Tom has stated he doesn't want to be involved. He had nothing to do with the church, he told me that himself.
My question is, since he's already been paid by private people to do this work, so now the contract is his pay for like that whole time period?
Okay, will have to be amended, his contract will have to be amended to deduct what he was paid to do this, give the wall field.
It's amended.
There is already a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Kirk?
No.
Darrell paying no.
Keith paying no.
Jack yes.
Gail, yes.
You guys are people, people. For your own community, we can't go to the council. Just 'cause you wanna take damage to church on your.
And get paid double.
I said amended.
That wasn't a motion.
There any public comments?
To make a little, little, uh, amended according to the.
If it will pass, the floor will not.
Well, then the wall field will just grow, because my church event is done, and, and we'll hire the next year when we do it. Uh, are there any public comments? When is the next meeting?
First, first, Monday and August.
First Monday and August. Post it on the floor.
First Monday of August.
First Monday of August, which is the.
If they show up.
All right. Next one is the first. Okay, can you maintain a motion for Germany?
Make a motion to Germany.
All done. All those in favor?
Yes.
Darrell paying yes, Keith paying yes, Jack yes.
Gail, yes.
Oh, Kristen, yes.
Yeah, we're gonna do it. And how can, can Charlie put the seal on?
Pleasure sitting with you, sorry, hopefully I wasn't too distracting.